Signing all of these again, or is it just the?
Just the top. I have to sign, but you don't.
We started to. Alright, so the manifest is coming around. Before we get started, I just want to acknowledge Holly and Gina's last school board meeting.
Thank you.
And thank them for all their years of service to the district. I hope to, I hope to be part, a smidgen of what you guys have done over the years. And then we have cake over there. Yes.
I noticed it's pink, thank you.
I told Maria, I said her favorite color is pink. We have a presentation from a student today from the elementary school.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Let me introduce Elijah Isingson. But I can substitute for Raylene in third part.
My fifth grade class of that wrote persuasion message so we can have a water filtration system on the third floor. We collaborated our ideas and reasons why we bought one and read an article on the margins of filtered water. Here are a few of the essays. We need new pipes for the third floor. I believe it tastes like dirt on the bottom of a shoe tread. I think our problem is we do not have any water to drink. It might contain lead and solids. We need a filter so it is safer water for us kids to drink. We deserve the right to have a water filtration station on the third floor. This is one by Grayson now. Hi, I am a student at APS and we have a water fountain on the third floor that does not have a filter. If we drank tap water, we could get sick. The pipes can be old and bad. But if we had a filter, this would not happen. The water just tastes really bad, like really bad. It's so big. We can't even drink it. I don't want to keep walking all the way to the first floor to get good water. Also, according to the CDC, some of the top causes of outbreaks is not having filtered water. That's why the third floor should have a filter. That's all I have. Hopefully we can get a filter, but that's my part. This is Raylene's. The third floor needs a water filter because the water in the bowls has food in it and it tastes like soap. There is always water spitting out of the faucet. The pipes may be harmful to the final disper- disperial of water because of lead leaching from the pipes into the water. This is another one by Everly. Have you ever had water from the third floor? If you haven't, it tastes like soap. Have you ever had water from the first floor? It tastes good. It tastes good because it has a filter. We want a filter in this squad. It is dirty without a filter. For example, without a filter, according to the Centers of Seizure Prevention, some of the top causes of outbreaks in public water systems include copper, salmonella, and potatoes A, E. coli, and nervous. In addition to that, kids put their mouths and fingers on the tube and we don't want their nasty herbs. Other reasons we need a water filter is, a filter water is just better. Filtered water tastes good, not like soap. Also, filters help to reduce lead and solids. Lastly, it takes time out of our learning time to walk up three stories just to get filter water. A general, the general in filter will be more efficient for our health and learning. So we want a filter even if it's not the school. Thank you for listening to my presentation.
Does anybody have any questions for him?
What grade are you in?
So the first floor has water filters on there.
In the addition, well, we go to the addition, the bottom building station.
Yeah.
There that has a filter, it gets changed out, like every five hours.
And that's the only one in the whole school.
Are you here asking us rules? Yes.
We, we did apply, you know, the grant strategy, but letting your water appropriate. But in order to get the grant, you have to fail. And longer it doesn't taste good, it's not fail. It's not above five parts of a billion. So we qualify for that. So that's where we're at. There's another grant, the environmental education thing. Don't have something.
Do you know how much it costs?
But I know there's sixteen thousand dollars times the tap water.
Oh, two thousand dollars, yeah.
And it's two thousand times the tap water and the filtration. All, any thing that's not vitamins and stuff. Like I think the ones that come on the first floor take out recently.
Yeah, I'm not sure how there's a filter, but each unit is about approximately a thousand dollars.
Is that with installation, or is that just?
I think this really feels like you could install it.
Have you reached out to us? You did a really good job, yeah.
You know, fantastic reading, and you hit all the points we need, like learning time is being effective, safety.
Well done. Used evidence.
Yeah.
Yeah. That was my favorite part.
Yeah, you've cited sources. I know. Yeah, very good.
That was very good.
Yeah, thank you for bringing it to our attention.
Yes, thank you very much.
Thank you, Elijah. You can hang out for the next couple hours and watch the school board meeting. If you want. Good writers. Thank you.
Alright.
Thank you.
So we need a motion for the minutes. Are we going to do anything about the water? Filtration system today, or? I don't think we can really tonight.
Recommend is that we look into it, look a little bit more.
You create some details and bring it back to the board at our meeting.
Yes. Alright, sort of. So we're making a motion for the minutes.
I can make a motion to accept the, are we doing around the early months?
Yeah, so we can discuss them in the meeting after. All those discussion? Do I have any changes to any of them?
We didn't have any.
Was, my only question was Jane in our non-public after the interview?
I don't think, I don't, no, I don't think so.
Okay, alright.
But she wasn't listed, was she?
No, that's why.
No, I know I wasn't there.
Okay.
Yeah, I know I wasn't there. Her cookies were.
Yeah, the cookies were there.
Yeah.
And I don't have any changes. Anybody else? Any other changes or anything? All those in favor of approving the minutes as a group?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? So. Citizens comments. Mind you, just to state your name for the record, so Maria knows, I think she probably doesn't know everybody in the room. She may not know everybody online, so we'll start within the rooms. Anybody have any comments? Sean?
My name is Sean Larry. I believe Maria knows how to spell it. As April said, you have two outgoing board members, longtime board members, but you're going to be saying goodbye to both thirty combined years of experience institutional knowledge. I have been on board with both of these ladies for way too long. I got off before you guys. I wanted to just give you guys a little token of my appreciation for everything that you guys have done and for all the work that we have done together. Even when we disagreed every now and again, but not that often, that's good. So, thank you very much. Those are not real Gerber dates, so don't go tearing them out in the yard. You'll just have to dig them back up. Enjoy and.
April, I have one comment, but I don't know if it's more appropriate to do it now as citizens' comments, or just to wait? Because I know you're going to be discussing the academic calendar and that the union did provide some feedback that everyone wanted a piece of a minute after I gave it to Maria. So I don't know if it's appropriate for me to say it now, or if I should say that you guys have that conversation.
Um, I would think to say it now and then we can go back to it when we get there.
Yeah, so the only other piece that didn't come across in the intervention that I gave you guys was that we're moving the PD days to the November and we're looking at the end of the year. So it pushes the end of the year out longer. You know, we're still at one hundred and eighty days. But also, we're now not having the October workshop day, slumbers day that students have off. So it's an official day on top of the president's day, which because the calendar moved for a week. So even though it's still one hundred and eighty days, it's pushing the calendar two days because of where we used to have days for vacation during the time. And that was the only piece that I just missed on getting the information to Maria.
Any other comments in the house?
I just wanted to thank Holly and Gina for all the work they've done over the years for the school. Very much appreciate it.
And thank you for zooming in to all of our meeting comment. When you're not there.
This may never happen again. One of us is on the screen and the other one's in the room.
And you're good. So anybody online have any comments?
iPhone, do you have any comments? Okay, Melissa, do you have any comments?
On, we have a superintendent's report.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. It's, it's brief. You'll notice our reports are brief, but that factors into the short time span between our last meeting and now with vacation thrown in there. It has been a bit of a whirlwind budget-wise, but there are some fairly significant items that we thought we should discuss. First is FY twenty-five general assurances, which I've provided for. Everyone should have received a copy of those in the packet. And so I've already signed away on all of those. What I typically do when we get these, and this, these started back in twenty sixteen where they consolidated, as you know, all of the the Title I or the federal grants, and they basically make the superintendent share the information with the board. When the board attests this back, the superintendent, they share that information. Because prior to twenty sixteen, there were some board members who were bringing to the commissioner's attention, but that wasn't happening. And that the superintendents were simply stating to the board, our federal grants are all set, and then it was a question. So what we typically do, and I know Jane has reviewed them as well, if we go through, ensure that the policies that are included and the requirements for all of our education are in our policy management. We, we've agreed that that is the case. So it looks like everything that we have in place is in order. And so we would ask that you sign those for us, initial those, we can send those in, so we remain eligible to receive them for federal grants to get the supply of education. We have movement on the AP role network. Next meeting is in April. I'll actually be traveling up to Gorham. It's an in-person meeting to do some plotting and scheduling of when we can offer specific courses. We really want to dive in with some other school districts, meeting with principals and a couple of other superintendents from North Country. That, that has shown an interest, and so they may be coming on board with that as well. And it looks like we'll have at least four courses we'll start with to offer online, beginning in twenty twenty-five to twenty twenty-six. Our goal is to have anywhere from twelve to eighteen students per class. We believe that with the number of schools that are enrolled, that we'll easily have twelve to eighteen students spread out among separate schools. It's going to increase the number of opportunities for students, increase the number of students in a class. Make it a heck of a lot more cost efficient than one teacher teaching upwards of eighteen AP students as opposed to two or three and replicating that in seven other students. So we're excited for that. So we're definitely moving forward with that. I think I shared with you, we, we did have our second meeting of the EOP or emergency operations planning for the town of Kingsdale. It hadn't updated its, its plan since two thousand and four. So a lot of what was in the old EOP is based on power plant across the river. Well, that's no longer an active plant, so a lot of the conditions have changed. So the campus still is an active participant in the planning as well as any type of emergency that takes place. So we have gentlemen from Southwest Regional Planning Commission who was contracted to facilitate the work. There are several, maybe six of us stakeholders in town who are on the, on the team. But I think three or four more sessions, they're about ninety minutes to two hours once or twice a month on Wednesday, and it just happens to be at the next Wednesday, going back to that. So I'll keep bringing back, right now we're still going through the base plan and pulling out those items that we no longer need, and then we'll build in the planning items that we do. Anything that's going to be impactful to the campus, you'll be well aware of ahead of time. So we won't commit the campus to something that you're not aware of. So for instance, reverse evacuation, transportation, those kinds of things. Those are all going to be elements of the town's emergency operation. So I'm going to want the board to be well aware of what we, what we mean by that, and what we're going to be signing on. I don't expect anyone to push back on it unless it's an expense on our part that we don't give a reverse. So we'll be sure to continue to, to apprise you of that. COVID nineteen won't go away. We all know that. It's how we're dealing with it that matters. And lately, if you've seen the news, I will see, just about eliminated any type of isolation or quarantine for anybody with COVID nineteen unless you are, you know, you're ill, stay home if you're ill. That has become the mantra. And so what I'd like to do, and just had a brief conversation with Joe and John, and we'd like to just briefly meet with our nurses to reinforce that, so that we're all on the same page. The board did back in the fall, not necessarily vote, but agree. You had voted earlier either last year in your report of follow CDC guidelines. And so we're merely going to be adhering to CDC guidelines. But I wanted you to be aware that there's been a change in those guidelines. We are still subscribing to that. My last item would be, and it's not on your report, because Maria and I really just jumped on this. We wanted to make sure that we had it this evening, is the high school graduation date. There should be a discussion and a decision on what day that will be. I have good news and I have bad. The bad news is we had one snow day this year, which I guess could be good news too, because it was fine, the kids got a day off. The bad news, bad news, is that it pushed the last day of school to the following Monday. Which means if you back out five days, when seniors are required to have their one hundred and seventy-fifth day, is that Monday prior, June tenth. So graduation would be, is it June tenth?
June, it's a Monday.
Yes, so it would be June. No, it's, it can't be Monday, because we're looking at June eighteenth, which is a Saturday.
No, June eighteenth is a Tuesday. You'd be looking at the fifteenth for a Saturday.
That's what I want. I want that one.
Father's Day weekend?
I don't know why I put the fifi-, oh, I don't, I put the eighteen thing, because I looked at last year's teachers. Father's Day weekend, happy Father's Day.
So technically, the seniors only have to come that Monday, the tenth of that week?
That's correct. That would be the one hundred and seventy-fifth day. And so senior activities, I, I know, I know. Pardon?
It's the law, though.
It's what the statute reads for school attendance, because we subscribe to days.
Oh, no, I was just asking.
I know, but I was asking too. Haven't been a senior. So there could be senior activities, there could be other things that, that students do. Our undergrads don't, aren't done until fifteen, seventeen. And so they're still graduating before the end of, end of school, which is, I think, a plus for seniors, because that's, that's a badge of honor. I know it's not, but that would be our recommendation when we're looking at the calendar. If we're going to subscribe to the statute, I hope we do. That we would have June fifteenth as a graduation date. And I'm told it's on Saturday in the morning, is it like ten AM? That, which is great, because try to have it on an evening, you run into the dumb smart. We don't seem to have too many of those on a Saturday morning. I don't know what weird bunching, but that's what I would propose. I'd be looking for action on that. They're typically take action.
Do you want to do that now? I know we're going to be talking about next year's calendar, we live graduation now.
Well, twenty twenty-four graduation date is under board business. I mean, yeah.
I mean, you could do it now or then, whoever works with us. I'm all about getting it done if we just weren't talking about it. So I just need a motion to accept that date as the current date this year. I'll make the motion to accept the date. A second. Any more discussion? Listen, favor? Any opposed? So.
Okay, that, that concludes your report for this month.
So with the COVID piece, where, you know, with on CDC, so things are changing, we have a communication plan that when during the whole pandemic, whenever there would be a change, it would be communicated out to parents. So just an FYI, if the board wants to follow that, so.
Awesome, thank you.
And if, if April doesn't know where to answer that, we should all have it, but I can make sure.
I actually have a copy that you provided for me earlier that we were looking at.
I have, okay.
Yeah. Yeah, you're that good.
I have everything, everything, which not for long. It'll be a big purging in my future. Cool, thank you, David.
Ben, thanks very much.
So. Is the ministry, did anybody have any, I know generals, did anybody have any questions on that?
I mean, I had a lot of question marks, but as long as they understand it, I feel confident in their ability. I definitely, and some of my questions were answered as I went through it, like the Stevens Amendment. I was like, what is that? It tells you. Yeah, so as long as you guys are good, then I feel good signing that you're good.
We're happy to answer anything offline either. You have a question, if you're up late reading it, yeah, keeping you awake at night, we'll
Do we need a motion to, for me to sign it? On the board?
I don't, I remember a motion being needed, but it wouldn't hurt, because if we sent, they're very particular about that. I think it'd be interesting.
I'll say, say, do you have minutes? It's just, and they probably won't, right?
Yeah.
So just somebody wanting to make a motion to approve, to sign the issue. I'll make a motion for April to sign. Also, I didn't say somebody. Any more discussion on it? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Some.
Can we, can we go back a minute to graduation, sorry? The teacher workshop in May? Which is what date?
It is on the twenty-fourth, which is a Friday.
And the students aren't in school that day?
That's correct.
So in the past, they've done the senior student day that day, which is counted as a student day, which pushes graduation back up to the following, the previous weekend. Is that a possibility to do?
It, it works within the, the rules. I just, I don't understand students. So students aren't in school on that day, but.
But they do senior day.
Oh, it's a senior activity.
Their class day, their class day, so they do their class day.
So.
Which counts as a.
That would count as one of the five senior activity days.
As a day.
Yes, what?
To move it back to June seventh.
But isn't already in there one hundred and seventy-five days already? I think we only did that one year. I don't think that's a, a class, that's not a, a school day normally. We did it one year a few years ago, and there was like a kerfluffle about stuff, but that's not a normal day.
Yeah, so it's not a day that schools in session, but I'd be happy to look at it. I'd be happy to call the Department of Ed and get a, get a if they're in. If, if the board's open to that. Or if the board wants to not do it, and I'll take direction from the board on that.
I think it would be worth doing. I mean, having the seniors come for one extra day seems silly. And so if we can, I think it would be good. As a mom of a senior, I'd give her a bit to, really give her a look, see, or even.
So the question is, it's just the seniors, right? So there would be, it would count as a day. We're going to try to see if it'll count for a day for the seniors, for their seniors.
We did something similar a few years ago. Deb got in touch with like I force, with the I four C system or something like that, I remember.
Yeah. It would be a technical wish on end of year.
Yeah, so then we need to, we need to re-motion our board for that. Sorry to hold up.
Well, you could table it, table it.
Well, we should probably do a motion saying that if it's approved by the Dewey or whoever it needs to be approved by, that we would do June, is it the eighth?
It'd be June eighth.
Yeah, June eighth, and if it's not, then it's June fifteenth.
So we retract the original motion and make it a, if then motion?
Right.
But then how would the board be notified if it's approved, you know?
I just want to know what the senior day entails, because.
It's a, it's a trip day. It's their senior trip day.
So it would be Tim Benson and.
Yeah.
Sam Killig. The senior trip would be that day, which is Memorial Day week.
Is that where the seniorship is?
No, we were waiting on. It's to be determined.
Yeah.
So that's fine. That's my only question. I'm all, all in favor of the earlier better, but it is, like I said, Memorial Day week.
Right. So that might not be their idea.
Well, or getting staff names. Well, or getting staff names, it's like that.
Do they have a idea where they want to go?
Yeah, it's.
It'll, we're going to be talking about it later.
That's, that's my only question.
So that means not determined anyway.
Yeah, I mean, it doesn't even, it doesn't even have to do with anything with the teacher workshop day, because the class trip day isn't always on a teacher workshop day, right?
Right.
Yeah, so it's just the class trip day, it doesn't need the teacher workshop day.
Right.
Okay.
Twenty nine students.
Yeah.
Staffed by two. Two adults.
Yeah.
So it would be.
Whatever day the class trip day is.
Yeah. Well, it would depend on if the two adults could go also, instead of just the DOE.
Well, it's more than two.
More than two selves.
It's one, it's one in ten for, for a trip, so we're, so we're gonna have three to four.
Yeah. And that's all.
Yeah, 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 that we're going to get to. So then might be question becomes. If the, if the senior tracks, if the senior trip day is on a day where there's school, it won't matter.
What do you, what do you mean?
If the senior trip day isn't on a day we don't have school. Then it won't matter. So I'm saying, if the date's not determined yet, we can't make that decision.
That's why the teacher's workshop day works out. But the teachers, I, I must, the teachers are supposed to be at the workshop day, so that's what you're saying, they might not be able to go on a trip that day.
Well, that can, because it's more.
Memorial Day week, yeah.
I mean, you're only going to Boston.
Yeah.
It's not terrible.
Too bad, yeah.
Um, and it could be that, that Friday. Which wouldn't affect. Chaperones necessarily.
There seems to be a lot of variables to this.
Yeah, like before, before you say the day of the trip, you should check with the chef.
Yeah, so. My suggestion. Because I know people have any plans, right? So my suggestion is we leave it as is. We voted on it, it's the best. And if something comes before us. You know, start a next meeting in April. I mean, I don't know if that's feasible for everybody, but I mean, at this point, it seems like there's too many variables. We don't know the date of the CD trip. We don't know, so we can't say yes, we know. Even if we get it from the DOE, that it can be used as a day, that it's a school day or not at this point. I mean, I don't know how it rails things about it, but.
I just want to intro, before.
Yes, thank you.
I want to introduce Michael Phillips, who's our new student. Student board member, um, just a ninth grader, and they were, uh, second. Uh, in the voting, the second in this, and also Michael last year was second out of three. So, um, they're willing to come on board in short posts, so just want to introduce him, sorry.
Yeah, it wasn't on my thing, so.
Uh, I could probably ask seniors about what they think the trip should be. Like if I go around and if I get a list of all the seniors and I go around asking them. What they think the trip stage should be, then maybe probably can I, yeah, like. That's very helpful.
I just thought you should check see when the trip was the year that we counted it as a school day, you know what I mean? And it might have still been on a school day, but that wasn't going to be a school day for them, because they weren't going to be there. I'm not sure. Was it the main workshop day?
It was two years ago, it was two years ago. I believe it was the main workshop day, I believe.
So then maybe that's not a problem. I was just, we'll do one time, only one time, we haven't do it.
It was just.
The board approved it, Teresa, you said?
Yeah, that one's, yeah, yeah, but they, she, she checked it with the DOE first, though.
And, and the DOE approved it then?
There, I, I don't know what, there were certain things she had to do with the, like, the I four C system, right?
I don't believe she had to get it approved. I think she had to check into numbers of days, and there was something behind the scenes she had to do, and if I recall right, there wasn't a DOE approval. She just had, we had to meet certain requirements.
Yeah, we just want to make sure we're not running a follow over rule. They won't necessarily say, yes, we approved it, it's. Yeah, you won't be breaking the rule if you do that.
Yeah.
That's what I'd be looking. And I'd be looking to nail down staff who are attending, so that we know that the non-classroom staff, who wouldn't be missing the PD, their support staff. Yeah, I'd love to come back in April with all the details.
Hey, are we going to have parents? Upset if we wait until April? Meeting? Because usually it is approved in March, yeah.
Yes, you will.
Yeah, they're already, yeah, exactly.
I mean, I can have the information tomorrow.
We have a meeting tomorrow. All right, so why not, so can we, can we make a motion to retract our, retract our?
Whoever made the vote. Whoever made the motion is true.
Okay, did Kendra make it?
Yeah, I think so. I made the motion, who read it, who?
Who seconded?
I did. And, um, yeah, Kendra seconded.
So it's been, it's been made a seconded to withdraw. Any more discussion on withdrawing it?
A motion to rescind. Second on the motion to rescind, and that's about the time.
And then.
So then we have to vote on that.
Right, we have to vote on that, yes. So, uh, all is in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No, also.
So we have to make a motion to table it till tomorrow.
Yes, so we're going to, I mean, a motion to table it till tomorrow.
I'll make a motion to table it until tomorrow.
Second? I'll second. Well, any more discussion on it? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved.
We'll bring it back to other business tomorrow night.
So, sorry, and thank you. All right. Are we all set before I move forward with anything that we talked about previously? We're good, back to it.
Go back to it.
All right, so, um, business administrators report. Jeanie?
Yeah, Madam Chair, you have my report, um, rather brief, um, as everybody knows, I'm kind of waiting until the sixteenth, then men. Can move forward with getting contractual information into our accounting system, so that we're getting everything set up to get our letters of assurance in contracts out. Um, we, uh, in my report, I stated that we're working with TD Bank to implement the positive pay system. We are actually about two steps further than that, just since I wrote the report. Um, all of our data has been collected, it's going in. The only thing we have remaining is to have our, um. Our district treasurer just sign off on the documentation they need, um, because it's our signature that controls everything. So once that done, is done, we'll start our training. Um, so I'm, I'm really kind of excited, because basically what this does is it sends up, up a list of, here's all the checks. So they know what to expect, so if something comes through that they see that wasn't on that list. Then they'll, they're going to tell you there's an alert. So it's, uh, just an added fraud protection, which is, it's a really good thing to have, okay? Um. We have, I, I reported out that we submitted two, um. Requests to the Department of Education Nutrition Services for two grants to get, uh, proofers, which. I'm kind of an idiot, I didn't know what they were, Dr. Ryan did.
So I have a question mark next to four proofers, then underline, I was like, I don't know what this is.
More scrubbers, whatever, but no, they're for, for the bread, for rising like pizza dough and stuff, and so the ones we have are not holding the temperature.
You don't have to wait for a rainy day, you can just do it. You don't have to put them on top of your refrigerator.
Look at them like you knew what they were.
I thought it was a table, but.
I assumed it was something for like swiping cards, so.
No, so currently we have two in the, um, middle high school. We're looking to replace both of those, they are sixteen years old. We are looking to replace the one that is in the elementary, is about five years old, but is not. Holding up like the others, and do an additional one at the elementary school. Um, I don't know if we'll get them, but, you know, it's, it's worth a shot, we're going to, we're going to try for it. Um, you can only do one every five years, our last one was in two thousand and eighteen, so we're counting the years going, I think we're good, I think we can do it this year. Um, so we've got that, uh, sent in. Um. We are also, um, I've talked to you about the cross-training. Today's payroll was run by our assistant, and she. You know, with, but maybe a question or two, payroll went out, as long as mine was correct, I was okay.
I haven't been to five yet, so I, I don't know.
Um, but again, to me, cross-training is just a huge, huge benefit, and I will cross-train as much as I can on everything we have. Um, so that's pretty much my report. If you have any questions?
Can you tell me how, how much a group rep?
Yeah, they're around, uh, two thousand, two hundred. Twenty-eight apiece or twenty-four? I'm trying to think back to the, 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 um. Total, but it was about four thousand four at school. So we had, um, three, uh, quotes that went in. The hard thing is. We have to take a look at the space we have, and then find a proofer that fits within those specs. So you're kind of limited, so there were basically like two brands we could work between, but, uh, we obviously, as I usually do, want the lowest quote. And because they're only like two thousand, we didn't bring those to the board, because they're under your limit, but, um, the state, we still have to do the three. One bolt for them.
Any questions for Jeanie? Um, Director of Personalized Learning?
Um, Madam Chair, you have my report. Um, I'm happy to answer any questions. I do want to add a couple of things that I didn't put in, because one was. Phila Secret, which was who we gave the giraffe award to, this, um, we give out three times a year. Um, we had seven nominations, which was exciting from across the district. Um, really nice nominations, um, but, uh, Caleb Thurston was the second. Recipient of the giraffe award, so I went into his room today, and he, um, was proudly, um, displaying his giraffe, and his giraffe has. He has, uh, I mean, he has a name, but I forgot what they, they've already named him. He's in the band pictures, he's in all the things, so, um, he was, it was, it was a nice, uh, nice presentation, um. I did, I was remiss in not putting in here an event that's happening on April nineteenth, that, um, I, I will report out on when after it happens, but wanted you to know, because you'll be hearing about it, and, and as a result of our. Kindness one-on-one work that we're doing, um. The, uh, one of our teachers came to, came to me to talk about how can we sort of beef up, um. Some of the work we're doing on advisory, um, through that discussion, um, came an idea to kick off some. As we look at some, some shifts in our advisory, how do we kick off, um, really building on the kindness one-on-one work that Dr. Ryan put out? And so April nineteenth will be a community kindness day, um, where the, um, Liz Bogio is working closely with me, because she knows the community so well. To, um, all of our advisories will be out in the community doing a, some sort of a give back, um, to, uh. Some sort of community. Organization, um. I don't know if all the teachers know that yet, but they'll be getting, uh, formats, uh, they'll be getting a. That's right, that's right, it was discussed. Nothing was confirmed, but now we're ready to roll with it, so, um, teachers advisories will be deciding what they want to do. Um, so it will come from individual advisory, some will be teaming up, so on that day, um, we will do from eight in the morning until about eleven, right before lunch. This community will be abuzz with, um. Mostly around here, because of transportation purposes, but we're working out those details, so you'll see that happening. Um, which will be a really nice way to sort of emphasize the kindness piece. And, um, we will be handing out, uh, flyers, uh, for the portfolio learner survey for community members to take at the meeting on Saturday. Um, the student will be doing that for us, so with a QR code that they can scan and take the survey. And I didn't put the numbers in here, but we did have, um, a hundred and eighty-seven, I think it was a hundred and eighty-seven portfolio learner responses from students, and. Correct me if I'm wrong, uh, I think. For the eighty-seven parent responses.
Awesome, yeah.
Um, so, um, and the committee would be able to start, um, going through that data, so we have teachers, parents, students now, we'll be getting all the community members, um, gathered in the next week.
Any questions for?
Thank you.
You have a student from Haiti?
We do, yes, and he was welcomed with open arms, and, um. I, I talked to, I talked to him today, no, I really didn't, we, but we, we communicated a little bit, and he seems to be settling in nicely.
Great.
Now, it's one of the other, other businesses that I have for tomorrow.
Yes.
Any, I already asked my questions, right? Um, thank you very much for that. Now we're on to the principals reports, Mr. Burke?
Thank you, Madam Chair, you have my report, um, you have the information on the prom. We're going to figure out the senior trip. Tomorrow night, which will be great, um, and you also have a request for a field trip from the life skills program, um, and. The policy says any, any field trip over a hundred miles needs to be approved by the school board, so that's why these are coming up, or if they're at a state, regardless of they're overnight or not. Um, so if I'd like to start with the life skills trip to the Rice Eco, so I don't know if you ever been there, their science discovery program is great. I believe they went last year, um, but it's a great program, it's a great experience for our students, so I would ask for approval for that. Uh, field trip.
Does anyone have any questions about the field trip?
Were we just doing the?
Yes. Sending a motion to.
I'll make a motion to. Field trips of life sports paths.
Second?
I'll second.
Any more discussion? All those in favor? Aye, any opposed? So.
Um, you also have a copy, the school newspaper is finally off and running, and, um, we do a little bit of editing, editing, um, they've done a fantastic job. Uh, this is, uh, spearheaded by a student who's doing ELO. So this is all part of that, and, uh. They're doing a great job, and Alexis Johnson is overseeing it. So that's fantastic, um, and they're doing a great job, and I hope that one more out. You've got the prom information, um. You know, there's a lot that'll start up in the spring here, spring course. Um. And, uh, I will also talk to, uh. Senior, uh, advisors about the trip, so we have information tomorrow. And then, I don't know if this is the appropriate time, but Michael Phillips, uh, you know, I've already introduced them. I don't know if you want to, I know there's some information, but if you want to wait, I know it's in other business. Oh.
Maybe this is.
Yep.
Thank you very much. Any questions for Mr. Burke?
My only question was for names of chaperones, I could not figure out the last word, depending on class.
Vote.
Is it vote? They, so, oh, or who they want with a chaperone. I was thinking number of chaperones, I was like, they get to vote on how many they want.
No, they hold on to.
Who, that makes more sense.
And, and we already have, I, 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 I don't want to say off the top of my head, but we have enough chaperones.
So you don't know yet how many chaperones, because that's all on the floor, and that's like.
Uh, I believe there's four, I guess.
Okay.
Yeah, because one, then we have twenty-some students. So that's. It's sufficient. I'm going to ask Parker.
He would say yes, you know?
She wants to go.
All right, any more questions for Mr. Burke? Thank you, Mr. Burke. Mr. Bogie?
Uh, thanks, Madam Chair, uh, you got my report, and. Happy and Brian answer any other questions? The busy, like John said, the busy time of the year is quickly approaching. Before you know it.
Just want to say I'm liking all the presentations we get from the elementary school with the, with their, uh, thoughts on how to do things and what they like to see, so.
Yeah.
Keep them coming.
That's good, I'm noticing, like I said in the report, that the persuasive writing and.
Yes.
And opinion writing is, uh, bringing out these qualities.
Also, we're going to hear from the person here soon, I think.
I don't know, Mackenzie's on leave, so I don't know if it was her classroom that, that did that. Uh, so I'm not sure that they'll be able to come in.
But it's good to hear that we already got one in our class, so.
Yeah, it's comfortable, yes. The time for it ran.
Any questions, Mr. Bogie?
I have a question, because it just maybe you reminded me when you said something, so, um, with presentations and stuff, so, um. The Vernon Town Clerk happened to post yesterday, yesterday, the day before that. The dog tag, you know, was decided by one of the, their schools in, in Brown, in Darnett, well, I guess it was Vernon, it was Vernon. So we used to do that, is that, that stopped, or?
No, we did it, uh, it just didn't, it just didn't work out with, uh, the kids coming this year.
Okay.
But Mrs. King ran it again, and voted on things and. Uh, presented it, so.
Okay.
Still doing it, it's just. The timing of things just wasn't good this year.
Okay.
Okay. So when they end up with?
He's like, you had to ask.
Get a dog and you'll find out. I don't know. I don't.
Something. Well, that's good. Thank you. I did think about that the other day. I was thinking.
About that time, right?
Any other questions for Mr. Bogio? Thank you, Mr. Bogio. IT Director's report.
Madam Chair, you have my report. Happy to answer any question.
I didn't have any questions. I just love that our ELO student is able to venture valuable work. Even if they don't go in that field, like to know how to do that is amazing.
Yeah, John, good to see the results. Uh they walked by. We're finishing up imaging those.
Nice. Amazing.
It's great.
They look brand new. I I said, what do we buy new?
Lap tops. That's great. They were lined up right outside Connor's office.
Yes.
Yeah. Are they all still there?
Yeah.
Kind of a full circle for you though. I'm starting here that you're teaching with that move again.
Exactly.
And really just unserved. Thank you, Justin. Uh new board business. Mr. Meeting Discussion. We're meeting on Saturday. We're so from what I've been told, we are after the town is done or ten thirty, right? That's what we're doing this to ten thirty.
It's been no, it's not weird.
Different way.
Yeah, it is.
Places.
Yeah.
And yeah.
Whichever whichever comes first.
No, whichever comes latest.
I know, but it's noticed it whenever it comes first. And it's been noticed that way, I I guess. Forever, because that's what I was told when I looked into it. So I know.
But it doesn't matter because the town one is gonna go way longer than ten thirty. So.
They have a recommended time for the team to be here.
Why she's nine o'clock to see?
Oh, I. If I don't get her at nine, who knows the traffic?
Yeah.
On a Saturday.
I would say because because the timing is, I would say, because the notice of the of the our meeting is ten or ten thirty.
Yeah.
I would think I would think if you were there for ten or before ten, you know.
I mean, even on a good year, they have so many more articles. It takes more than an hour, even when there's nothing to really discuss.
I mean, I doubt we're gonna start then, but just in case.
I'll be here. It's true. It's a long time. Joe be here. You gotta vote in the town meeting.
And I was gonna say, encourage all our our staff and anybody that's in town to be there for all of them. Yep.
Well, the last time they went first, there was an interesting discussion, lengthy discussion about cemetery stuff. So, you know,
Never know.
Sting. Remember that? It was like one twenty minute session on cemetery or, you know, so.
At the budget hearing.
Yeah, yeah.
That's a very small item.
Yeah.
There will be uh daycare provided. I'm I'm told from that, from the uh.
National Honor Society, and we have two staff members.
Yeah.
And staff members from HHS. Thanks for the children.
So that'll be nice. Parents, if they have kids, they can bring.
Sure, grownups and.
Is that stopping at noon?
Oh, yeah.
I know in the prior years it has stopped at noon and meetings aren't over, so kids join us.
Yeah. I I would just recommend that if they don't stop at noon, it's message that as soon as the meeting is over, because one year when I was doing it, parents left, went to have dinner.
Oh, no.
And then came back and got their kids. Like, we were here until three thirty, almost four o'clock.
Oh.
Yeah. So it it just that's why we put a sort of a limit, like will you stay until the meeting is over, then you pick up.
That happened for real?
That really happened.
Four months.
Yes, we were here a long time.
And there have been meetings where it's ended and then and we're still going and kids just joined us.
Yeah.
Which, you know, during the school.
I think there was a.
It'll especially ended that last year.
We did. We we ended it. I think it was one o'clock was the latest. Yeah, I can't remember, but we put a timeframe on it.
Yeah. So I'll leave that up to you guys. Just make sure your parents are in it. Just let people know when they're dropping the kids off when that is. All right. Anything else for district meeting? Good. Superintendent's search update. Just go through it. Let's talk about that in public. Um twenty-four and twenty-five academic calendar draft.
I have one one thing to add or to clarify. Um in the feedback, um it says as teen um does hours, teen does not do hours. Teen does days. The only school reason it does hours.
Not sure where you're referencing.
Oh, feedback from the HFT. We recommend going to hours as, you know, teen does that rather than the one maybe day.
Oh, oh, yeah, I didn't submit that side.
Oh, yeah. Just just want to clarify that for the record. They do not do days. I mean hours. Yeah, they do. No.
They don't do ours.
Exactly. They do not do. They do what we do. There you go, whatever that is.
My question, I thought New Hampshire didn't recognize Columbus Day.
The majority of uh school districts do municipal offices post office.
It's probably why I didn't think we did anymore.
Yeah. I think what you're seeing is that it's not recognizing Indigenous Peoples' Day and maintaining Columbus Day.
Yeah. Yeah, I just seeing it and us having it off because it's Columbus Day was a little, it was a PD day, so I could live with the fact that we weren't in school, but seeing Columbus Day and we have it off because of Columbus Day is a little.
And the reason why we uh worked on that and put it in there is we start school. You know, people start winding up around the third week of August. We're really into it the last week of August. And then it is a sprint of the start of the year. And without a day, kind of catch your breath a little bit, you're straight through until Thanksgiving or Veterans Day, which we're federally required to have. That's a that's pretty taxing on staff. And I've seen um benefits of just having it just that one day to make it a three day break in October, just to give staff an opportunity to let their hair down and relax. It also gives the families a chance to kind of catch up with the beginning of the year and everything that's going on because it gets, you know, busy it gets. Everybody experiences that. And that's why we looked at Columbus Day being an opportunity for us to be able to do that for staff. So that's why we had absolutely included this in the in the subsequent calendar.
Do we have to call it Columbus Day?
No, the board can call it Indigenous Peoples' Day. You can call it Taylor's Day, whatever the board would like to call it.
Yeah.
I I
Recognize as indigenous.
I professionally re- I professionally believe it should be Indigenous Peoples' Day.
Yeah.
But because Indigenous People Day is not the state derived name of the holiday, um it's kind of a it's up to the board.
New Hampshire's always been weird with certain holiday and them not changing names and stuff, you know, like Civil Rights Day or something there. Something that, you know.
Well, I would prefer we listed. That's just my.
In the previous district, we would put on the marquee on one particular district Indigenous Peoples' Day, October tenth, whatever it was. We received a phone call from a gentleman shortly after posting it. His message was simply, you spelled Columbus Day wrong. So it may evoke some commentary.
I think it's a healthy conversation. Do we need to make a motion to change the name of the holiday of our calendar?
Uh I don't think you need a motion to change the name, but I think we just need some. Yeah, I think and when we if you vote to approve the calendar, we can make this a scribbler's note. Ms. Maria? On F the direction.
So does the majority report feel like we should change it to Indigenous Day?
Yeah, I'm with it.
Whatever.
Right.
Also, so.
So the Georgia. That would be Kingsdale Day. I like Kayla better.
Say it in.
So as as far as the calendar discussion, because it was brought up, what are the benefits to going to hours? If there are.
Um, some of the benefits, we exceed the number of hours required by the equivalent of ten school days. So if you measure the number of hours of instruction or the numbers, number of hours were open for instruction. Our students have ten days worth, ten days more than others uh school districts that follow an hour's base calendar that really only build in a hundred and seventy-five days because they have to have those five days worth of hours per snow day, which they don't use because the hours they have equal more than a hundred eight. So that's one of the advantages. If you have a snow day, you don't make it up. So you know that if your last day of school is June twelfth, it's June twelfth. Unless you had, you know, snowmageddon. We're digging out for twelve days or something.
It's been twenty years since that. Yeah, practically. We haven't do that. Whether it's five days or so.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. So um the other side of that on an hours is taxpayers pay for four years worth of instruction. And if we start lopping a couple of days off because we're saying we have the hours, that can become a conversation about value. It's not a strong or the strongest argument against it. It's just it's been one I it's it's an argument I've been in. And um I saw their point, particularly at the elementary level. The other is that when you have students who really require the ability to be, they're building that's heated, lit, has food for them, has people who are gonna be there to care and spend time with them. Because we know not all of our kids have those luxuries. Knocking off a couple of days because we've had snow days and not making them up based on hours also shortens our students. Then when we look at hourly staff, you then have to consider if we don't have school on, say, a random Wednesday in February, our hourly staff aren't not making that time. So that could affect, it could have contract implications where if we say we're hiring to pay you for next number of days with this number of hours and then we don't, we're either gonna pay them for it because that's what we agreed to.
That.
Or we're gonna face grievance. So so there are those things to wrestle with. So it's not a real cost savings from a labor perspective. It it may be, or and it has been for buildings that show a reduction in light costs, you know. Uh if you work in city sewer, water, those kinds of heating stuff you built. I mean, and it's actually better to have people in it because it maintains heat longer than if it's not the building that keep them that way. So there there give it to.
And historically, when we've talked about it before, there's also the record keeping because like it's hours of instruction, right? Like when you have a pep rally, that doesn't count, right?
That would not count.
Things like that. So you need to be really stringent about the record keeping. Um trying to think of other things we've talked about, Chime and Sean, because I know you've been involved in this. Uh feel free. Well, can I ask him to turn that?
Sure.
But um uh also like um, you know, teacher contracts, they're contracted for days. I don't know how Manana does it. If if their teachers are still contracted for days, even though we're not doing days, so that teachers, I'm not sure how that even starts.
Make up the days.
Okay, so staff, so staff are here without with it doing stuff without, yes.
Professional development.
Yeah. Um those were two of the videos I remember. Um and also it has to be renegotiated. Board cannot vote to just do it. It has to be in the next negotiation. Yeah.
We did this twenty thirteen in Manchester, one of the first districts to be able to do that and move a city to an hour's base calendar. And it was at the request of the mayor, who was chair of the board at the time, and he looked at it as a cost savings. And so we had to try and determine how we were gonna stop the cost savings by reducing the number of days on the school calendar. And it was disaster, but they still maintained an hour's base calendar.
And I don't know if Manana, I think Manana students get out pretty early compared to everybody else, but I don't know how that shakes out for staff doing stuff. So.
They stay on. I think they have an extra five days. I think they'll PD.
All at the end, which kind of.
Do they refer to it as summer camp?
Right?
You know, but.
Um so I think you just answered it. So like it would knock the days off at the end of the school year. So they would potentially get out maybe a week or a little bit more earlier. Which kind of started, I think, in our community with the way that our day camp was.
Well, it means that is like so, for instance, in this twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five calendar, it says the last day of school is June nineteenth. That would never change on an hour's base calendar. Unless we exceed.
It might be early.
No, if we, well, no, it would probably be more like, uh, so there's four, five, be more like June twelfth, June eleventh, something like that. Um where that way your graduation would then be June sixth. And that's really attractive if you have a lot of things you want to do that summer or you're going to get a job, which is good for kids, you know, want to start working some jobs. But for our elementary school parents, they might not be ready for elementary students to be out of school that early.
In our community, already we have struggles with that. Having a huge issue in our community with the day camp. Starts later. There's like a two, sometimes seems like three weeks in between from the time the school ends until summer camp begins and that is a.
Two weeks at the end too.
Yeah, and then two weeks at the end. So that's a.
We wouldn't be able to open a pool because the person who runs it would be a professional developer. So there there, what we had thought about when we were here last month talking about this, because it had been, it's been a discussion with us about hours, is that we really wanted to build more of a a proposal with all the pros and cons of the board way over the course of the next year, rather than have it be a discussion as a result of putting the calendar in front of you and within one meeting making that decision. I think it needs community input. I think it needs parents to be able to weigh in whether or not they are open to discussion. I I just think it needs a lot more.
Going to be my suggestion. I should be more researched on about it to to really find out how.
I don't, we can't make the decision now. It's a negotiation.
Yeah, I think you'd want to have to negotiate.
Yeah. Yeah, because it's come up in contract negotiations. A lot.
I I think I know which way the HFTs. I think I know which way it's going. This.
We've had that discussion. Right there. Yeah, I've been involved. And then I said, Sean, speak up. I could have said.
I mean, if you ask me personally, I want more days. Sorry. I think I think students should be in school more days, but different vacation.
It's so, why is it so late? That is even with snow days run out that way.
Are we starting later?
You're starting a day later.
It's only one day. Oh. There's two extra holidays.
We always have.
February. We give Presidents' Day.
Presidents' Day.
Oh, and now it's not.
Our way Christmas and New Year's are following this year.
So three more days.
A longer break.
Yeah.
Two, two, it's a longer break. So. We did try to compensate on those two days by have looking at having new staff orientation, the nineteenth, twentieth and twenty-first.
Yeah.
But then having uh the rest of the staff come in on that Thursday, Friday, Monday, and having students start that Tuesday wasn't very palatable to the people who were giving input on the calendar. And I don't mean HFT, I mean people around the room and the team and so forth. They didn't think that that would be a natural start here. Um and then they have, you know, students, I mean, students are are coming when students are coming, but uh for staff members to really get organized around it. They didn't want to start on off things like that. They want to start on that Monday. So that did bump it a little later.
I always love a Wednesday start because then it's three days, the next week is four days, then the next week is five days. And so it's like each week it's a little bit longer.
Build up some stamina.
Yeah.
Right. Do we need to approve the calendar at this point?
Yes, please, because we'd like to communicate and distribute the balance, put it on the website.
Do we need a motion to approve the calendar?
I'll make a motion.
Any second? Uh any more discussion on the calendar? All those in favor? All?
I.
Any opposed? So. So graduation dating is not set yet. Prom is set.
Last information we've done that. Do we, we usually vote on the prom. Are we not gonna vote for the prom opening?
Do we have? I didn't see anything on prom.
It's in John's letter.
John's.
Yeah, it's in his like uh.
It's a John's word.
Yeah, our letter.
Yeah, it's for.
I read through it too. The second thing, maybe?
Yeah, yeah, it's our first paragraph.
It's literally the first paragraph.
It's literally the first paragraph. On the eighteenth. From four to ten.
In Greendale.
It's, oh, sorry, seven to ten, sorry. I don't know where four came from. Twenty-four, I think that's where we came from, sorry. Sorry, sorry. And they're, uh, going down to Greendale, it looks like.
It's interesting.
Yeah.
It's an interesting venue.
Yeah.
Been on their site. I mean, it's pretty fancy, pretty neat. Uh, they do a lot of weddings and different things, several different, uh, venues within the venue.
Oh, okay.
So, yeah.
Yes, it's what they do.
All right, so we need a motion to approve the prom date. So, May eighteenth, from seven to ten. I'll make that motion. Second, anybody? All's back in it. Any more discussion on it? All those in favor? Bye. Any opposed? So. All right, staff surveys for graduate. So we have a couple of, um, looks like requests to send out surveys.
It is so under, uh, I can't recall, it's off my head, it's a J or I.
J I C or I C J?
Uh, ILB, I think, I think it's ILB. I think it's actually ILB. It's non-academic surveys, so surveys other than Y, uh, the Y R V S. Need a fourth approval if it's not gonna be, and they also need to be, um. Uh, opt-in, opt-in, and these are particular research projects from graduate students, some, I think, three of the fourth, fourth, I think, is your survey, Joe.
Uh, no, the fourth is the actual survey. One of the teachers did have the actual survey. Yeah, yeah, that's the one for me.
So it's, um, any type of research that's being done in our school needs boards to approve, board to approve as well. And so those are presented. You know, Mr. Bogio may be able to talk through those, but they appear to be pretty straightforward.
Do you have any additional information you want to say about them?
Uh, no, I think that they're all valuable. You know, I did attend, Mrs. Taggart did not present at the, uh, conference in Keene, but. Mr. Main and Ms. Mahoney did both present and, uh, you know, the topics are valuable to our school, so. I see it as very valuable, and I think Mrs. Taggart's is also trauma-informed care, you know, and instruction, so.
We get the information from the survey? Will we see the information?
Yeah, they can, they'll provide a report at the end and, um, and I can make sure that they get it to me, which will then be turned over to the board to review.
Yeah, I'd love to, yeah, I'd love to see that.
One thing, Madam Chair, that we've done in the past in previous life is, um, ask the researcher to come present. And just briefly summarize, not the full dissertation, but briefly summarize the results and what it means. Then the board can ask questions, whether on things they don't understand or things that might lead to some more impact on the benefit.
Yeah, that might be nice.
That would be, I think, a fun spring activity for.
Okay, yeah.
Can we approve them as a group or do we?
You can approve them on a consent, so unless there's a problem, one of them, that was, must discuss.
See if they have a problem with, before we get, no, I think through the motion. Um, so I just need a motion to approve the group of surveys. That is, we can make that motion. Second, and, hold on a second. Any more discussion on them? All those in favor? I know, any opposed?
Thank you.
Thank you. Look forward to hearing all about. All right. Student floor member discussion. Sorry, Michael, do you have anything for us today? Uh, a couple things.
I did talk briefly about like, uh, I'll, I'll send you a question as well. I was, I'm sorry, it didn't want to be named.
I wanted to remain.
We don't know who you're talking to.
Well, it's like, uh, it was also a concern of other students about like the mixing of grade levels and all that, but, um. Mostly like high school and middle school should be in the same like cafeteria in the morning. Middle should be used or moved to, uh, the gym while high school stays in the. Uh, cafeteria. Well, there's also like better distribution of lunch groups, like how the, um, each grade level is with the lunch groups. Like how there's all of high school in one block and then there's like one middle school grade and another middle school grade. That was a big concern. Um, and then another one was about D courts that are out over there. Um, about like possibly using those for like sports or even just the P E class in general. Also other stuff like, um, when we were talking about the kindness one-on-one thing. Um, I was thinking like we could make letters, like do gifts to like senior homes. I've seen that one used a lot. Or like volunteering in the community, like community service, service, et cetera. And then like students, we could have students make like anonymous letters. Um, and then those letters would be swapped with other students at school, and that'll be like their letter they get. Um, could include teachers as well, so teachers could make some, give others students. And, uh, but. Actually, one more. Earlier with the, uh, daycare, uh, students and ELOs related to caring children or things like that could participate as a volunteer.
Were you finding that the complaints about the, in the morning where the high school and the middle school are mingling, are those more coming from high schools or middle schools?
Oh, actually, yes, mostly high schools.
It's not a situation middle schoolers feeling uncomfortable with.
Not a big thing. Like one teacher concern, not a few of the high schools.
They used to be divided. I thought the middle schoolers started in the gym.
We have, that's, we have school, I mean, morning program. We have quite a few kids and we started the school year, uh, most of the sixth grade went into the gymnasium. Uh, and now as they've become more comfortable with summer staying there, because we also wanted them to eat breakfast.
Yeah.
It really shouldn't be eaten in the gym, so they have to eat out there. Um, and then the lunches. Seventh and eighth grade eat together. This year we separated sixth graders, so they have their own lunch. Um, but nine to twelve eat lunch together.
Is the library open, um, in the morning?
Uh, no, uh, it will be on an individual basis, but we don't have staff.
Um, instead of like splitting up the high school and middle school, we could do like students who want to eat breakfast can't stay in cafeteria. While like students who don't go to the gym, that way students can still eat breakfast if they want and be in there. And then anyone else who went to the gym. That way there's at least some sort of split up.
That'd be a, uh, your decision.
Yeah. Those are great ideas.
The. The lunch concern, is it, is it because you guys are so separated at lunch or is, did you want more?
Crowding, just a lot of students in the, uh, high school block.
I see.
Either to like just one grade and like two other blocks, so putting more, like say six or seven and then. Eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, you know, splitting it up a little bit better, putting like four in one and then just the two in the other. How many students are in that lunch?
It's one. So sixth grade is. Forty, uh, seventh and eighth grade, you're talking seventy-five. The high school, yeah, well, high school's about a hundred and twenty, a hundred and thirty, um, because a lot of seniors may not be there and, um, things like that. We're, we're fine with the capacity range. But yeah, it's definitely one of the more tragic times. And the morning, like depending, you have six through twelve, so you. Have quite a few kids there in the morning. Um, but at least this year we, we have three, four, five staff, one of them, including myself, that are near cafeteria in the morning. Which is, uh, it's been a great change from last year, myself and. Mr. Fleming. That was about it.
Thanks for bringing that to, for Michael.
Madam Chair, I may for Michael. Michael, could you share, this is really important to me to respect our students' identities and, and understand their identities. Can you share your pronouns with us, please?
Uh, he that.
Thank you. He that, pardon?
Or is he him?
Okay, thank you. I think it's important. So, thanks for that.
Thank you. All right. Well, thank you very much and welcome to the board. Uh, CDC update, we did that in our, in your report, right? Other business. Does anybody in the committees need any of the events out, please say?
I'm gonna ask Mr. Terrio and Mr. Bogio to remain predominantly to not.
Okay. Yeah.
Thank you.
But, thank you, Aaron.
Oh, and of course Jane.
Yeah, Jane. Never gets a leave.
I thought I felt a whisper of air turn back from out.
Told me that you had nagged him a little bit. Said you didn't fully, but you nagged him. I like this. I like it. You did a great job. But on May twenty-fourth, there is a. So if they pick this day to have their class trip, then they can graduate on six eight, not six fifteen.
I was thinking the way they could.
Yeah, they'll be super happy.
Probably the way we could like tap them on, feed up and get done by right, like in a minute, right? We could have a meeting held in advisory, just like call to, to chat with your chef in the office and that way you can get it.
Yep, yeah, that would be great.
Call for an advisory, because.
Yeah, so can you remind me? Okay.
That would be great. You could create a little thing, how many advisories are seniors? Well, if you did like, uh, if you did like four things for them to. And then they just put their signature, say, okay.
I know.
So you don't want to sign into it.
Thanks for coming, Michael.
I'll be back.
Yes. All right, good. Thank you very much.
Thank you, healthy, good night.
You too.
What's up? I wanted to form a voice.
Appreciate that.
These are so cute.
Yeah. I want to know when they drank soapy water.
I know.
Well, it's gonna be.
And soap came up a lot.
Yeah.
Okay, but it also doesn't taste soapy and sour at the same time.
Like, who was it? I thought that's.
But I wonder.
Oh, really? I don't.
I can send an email. I don't know, like if they.
We're still in our meeting, we're getting back on track, so we're down to committee reports. Behavioral support team. Gina, and we have not met. No, we met in January. Uh, budget committee. We're pretty much almost done.
Why are you looking at me? I'm not gonna be part of leading, it's just, I am done.
Done, done, done.
You're not gonna be at town meeting?
No, first year forever gonna be a word island for my unions conference.
Wow. We had plans afterwards, but we had to cancel. I said, we had plans afterwards, but, you know.
Notice how. All right. Community connections, we're posting, so we're, we'll keep it on, keep on. Uh, facilities maintenance. Feel like we got a meeting coming up.
Is it May?
Yeah, usually I know that, usually I have a date written down, sorry. Yeah, May nineteen, I, I'm sorry, it's April nineteen. We, so we'll have more information for that meeting. Um, has advisory, wanna talk about?
Yeah, I was a little late to that meeting tonight. Um, so I caught a little bit that they are prepping for the SASS testing. They have a couple of events coming up. They have math night. On March twenty-seventh at six thirty. Um, they also have their drama club presentation of Matilda the Musical, which is next weekend. Um, I don't know the.
Saturday.
The date, yeah.
Twenty-second, twenty-thirty, twenty.
Yep. Um, so that's coming up. Um, they're having a good amount of attendance. They have seventy-six middle schoolers, a hundred and fifty-two elementary school. Children, um, and they gained, I think, two more students from the high school staff members over there, so. That's pretty good. She thinks there's either six or seven, um, high school staff, so that's. Great, yeah. Thank you. Uh, legislation.
Um, a lot of bills are, well, all bills go through the crossover process, so read the email that the NHSBA sent. It's way too much to talk about. There you go. But, but it's important. I know a lot of people on the board walk over it, but it's, uh, it's really, really important. So, yeah, I know. She, she fairly admits it, but there's some wild stuff.
We'll pull the morcelian ones out for you.
Yeah, there's some wild stuff, so. And, and offer to testify at the legislature if that's something, I've done it, other Sean, I haven't done no legislature, but. People have, yeah, so it is, you know, impactful.
Um, personnel committee. Uh, policy committee.
Um, I said last month I was gonna put a spreadsheet in the drive. I did not do that, so, um, hopefully I can get it done before Saturday. But if I can't get it all finished, it's close to being finished. I just haven't gotten back to it. Um, I'll send it to Maria to put in the drive because I listed all of our policies and when they were last updated, I have the policies that are required by law, the policies that should have been updated the last couple of fall. When the NHSBA updates, and I can check and see all those general references to see if they're up to date, because I'm sure they are, but it will be very easy to see them in the spreadsheet, so. I will try to get that done.
Thank you.
Yep. It's very close, very close to being done, but you know, you just can't finish it. But you're right there.
Uh, select. I went to a meeting two meetings ago. It was really a hot and heavy discussion about the trash removal problems, so. That was pretty much the main event and topic that night, was just a lot of.
And I don't know if everybody knows, but I just saw on the reformer that, uh, police chief is no longer.
Yeah.
So that was.
That'll be a.
I was surprised.
I shocked. That might make town meetings all real long.
Yeah. Yeah, I, oh, I could see people coming out for that. Uh, staff development. You guys met? I'm not sure, is there a meeting scheduled? I know PD things are happening, so.
Ton of PD, uh, going on, uh, but we haven't scheduled anything just yet. We're just so focused on Saturday. Just trying, once we get over that hump, that a lot of these doors will open for us and we'll have a lot of time freedom to be able to handle such things.
Uh, super, super search committee is pretty much over. The tuition exploratory committee. Got it, Matt?
I think we can follow along with how that's going.
Right, yes, yes.
Yeah, we're sitting at Levi.
Yeah, and wellness. Uh, we just met this afternoon and Jane has us right on track. We looked through. Our policy and she had other schools' policies available for us to look at and so. I think everyone's feeling a lot better about it now. We have everything we need, yeah, but we need to make it more ours and the work definitely feels more doable now, so. And we meet again next month.
Uh, the eighteenth, I think it is, at three thirty?
Yep.
I did just want to say, I'm looking at the school newspaper, they had an article on bathing. And there were discussions that we had during the meeting about things that we do that we may not think are wellness initiatives or. Um, things that are, are taught in the schools, but I looked at that, I'm like, ding, 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 there's one.
Yeah. Great.
Yep. Yep.
Any questions for any committees I know I didn't ask? Alright, uh, citizens comments, anything on the tour?
You have a really good student rep.
Shades of Connor, Shades of Connor, yeah.
Better, better, um, really, really, really good.
Yeah, I'm excited.
Yeah.
I was over here bullying him and he handled it great. Like, oh, it's great.
Stuff with substance. But when I first started the board and I used to say, you know, if I get, but students were coming, it was like, okay, it's blah.
Yeah.
That's substance.
Yeah, that's what we want.
You know, coming up with ideas.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, there's some critical thinking, which, which is really important.
And willingness to go ask other students questions, so we're really gonna, we'll actually hear what.
And he's only freshmen, yeah.
I know, willing, like, feel us to seniors.
I, I asked him if he was, if Mr. Barth bullied him into his position. So it's fun, it's good.
Stuff that was discussed and, you know, from the elementary schools, like, oh.
Yeah, it is, so.
Yeah, I was impressed, you know, from the elementary school students.
Thanks, Shawnee King, you're good, uh, and nobody's online? Then, um, we just need a motion to go in on public? All done, there's no other business. Did we get a motion in a second?
Under A and C.
Did you get a motion in a second, my name?
Oh, I can second.
I had Kendra.
Thank you for listening to me, Maria.
Uh, roll call, I, yes, 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 alright.